Welcome City Council, go over to the Old City Council. This is a special session of the City Council to receive training on the do's and don'ts for City Council. I think it's important for us to have this type of course. It's going to be presented by Ann Bennett, who is the Executive Director of the Washington City's Insurance Authority. And I'm going to turn the explanation over after we have our roll call, and then we'll have Ann on it.
Andy?
I'm here.
Phil? Lauren? Myland?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Shannon?
He's not here.
Ann Julie? So we have three.
Okay. We're going to start the City Council Do's and Don'ts training now. I'll turn the time and the running of the meeting to Ann Bennett, Executive Director, Washington City's Insurance Authority. Ann, are you there?
I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of council, for having me. I must say, I'm glad I didn't have to try and get across a closed pass to attend the meeting in person. It's nice to sit at home and do this training. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and go through the PowerPoint. I don't know how many of you can see it. When I do share it, uh-oh, it says that you've disabled screen sharing as Connie.
Oh, what do I do?
I don't know. I think just enable screen sharing. You might be able to set me as a host if you go into participants. That might work, too. I think it's probably a security setting you have, but I think if you make me -- oh, there you go.
Did it work? Okay.
It worked. So let's see if I can get this up and running, and I'm going to share that screen. Can you guys see the screen? Now I got to try and -- there we go. Get to the slides. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I am Ann Bennett, the Executive Director of WCIA, and what I'm going to do through this training is I'll take pauses in between the slides. It's a little difficult for me to see everybody while we do the training, so I'll take a pause in between for questions, but if you have one, go ahead and shout it out during the presentation as well. I find that these virtuals, sometimes it's hard for me to know that you have a question, so just feel free to say I have a question if you do. So the first thing I want to do is kind of tell you who we are. Washington City's Insurance Authority is actually a municipal organization. We're formed by over 160 various municipalities and municipal entities who came together to self-insure their risks. Mainly that was because the insurance marketplace doesn't like cities. They don't like insuring the public entity risk, and so we were created in 1981 so cities could self-insure their risk together and pool their resources. The city of Goldendale has been a member since 1986. I've been with WCIA 24 years now, and back in my distant past, I was actually the risk management rep for the city of Goldendale, so I know your city pretty well, and I've worked with Larry for almost all of those years. We go way back. WCIA has over $160 million in assets, so you are safe knowing that your money is with us, and we have the strongest financials of any risk pool in the state. What we offer the city is basically self-insurance coverage. So you get $20 million per occurrence, this one says 25, I must have not updated it from last year, and you get auto, general, employment practices, and errors and omissions coverage. And the reason it stepped down from 25 to 20 is because insurance companies have started pulling out of the public entity market, so we weren't actually able to get insurance for $5 million excess of $20 million. One of the things that we do is we look very hard to find coverage for our members rather than look for exclusions, like most insurance carriers. We do also purchase coverage for the city, so you're fully covered for crime fidelity that covers all of your bonding requirements as a public official. We also have cyber and collusion policy, as well as first-party property and auto. Aside from that, one of the big tenants of risk pooling is that we provide risk management. The idea is that we want to prevent the loss of member occurring. The majority of cities, I would say, not the really big cities, they self-insure, but probably about 80% of all cities belong to some type of risk pool. And it really is our mission to help you avoid having the claim in the first place and to make your city safer for your citizens. So that's why we come out and do these trainings, and this is a training that I do for councils so that you, as an entity or as an individual, don't create liability for the city. So that's what this training is about, to help you understand where you could create liability. So that's all about WCIA. Do I have any questions on WCIA? Hearing zero, we'll get into the good part, which is you, as an individual, have absolute immunity for your legislative activities. So when you are legislating as a body as a whole, so when you're adopting budgets, you're passing ordinances, you're adopting resolutions, when you are a body as a whole making these decisions, you cannot be sued individually. And people have tried. People have tried to sue individual council members kind of as a technique of intimidation or coercion. The law is very, very strong, and in fact, in one case, when we had somebody that was suing individual council members, we went ahead and got sanctions against that party, and they had to reimburse us all of our attorney's fees. So just know that when you are on the dais, you are legislating, you have an absolute immunity for your activities as a legislator. Any questions on that? So we're going to go into specific areas of liability that councils get involved in, so I kind of broke it up by different areas, and so we're going to start tonight with land use. This is the first topic we're going to talk about. So with land use, one of the areas that councils get involved in is hearing appeals. And so sometimes you're sitting as a, what's called a quasi-judicial board. And my guess is when you're going to be sitting as a quasi-judicial board, you will be told that by your city attorney or by Larry. They will say, you are going to be in a quasi-judicial hearing, and it's important that you know that. When you sit quasi-judicially, that is different than sitting legislatively. So basically, what you're doing is you're acting as a judge, and when you go to court, judges are fair and impartial. They don't have one side or the other in mind. They are simply there to find facts, and so they are the fact-finder, which is what you would be. You must be fair and impartial, and there's something in land use law called the appearance of fairness doctrine. And what that says is you, from a reasonable person looking from the outside in, you must appear to be fair and impartial. So it's not that you think you're fair and impartial, it's that a reasonable person who would look at you and how you're sitting as that decision-maker as fair and impartial. So what that means is you can't communicate with a proponent of, let's say, a particular project, or an opponent. And this is where it can be difficult, because your citizens are coming to you on a lot of issues. And let's say you have a land use development that you get a lot of community input in, this could be an issue, because they are going to say they're an opponent to the project, and you cannot communicate with them. So I do see a raised hand from -- I don't know how to pronounce your last name, Kevin. Is it Fjalk?
That will work.
Okay.
So when we're talking about facts and records, does that include common knowledge such as law, no matter how obscure it is? And also, we all have different strengths and weaknesses. If our strength is, let's say, in my case, regulatory, are we allowed to put that forward? Because the common person, a reasonable person, is not going to know what we're thinking with the intent. Is that coming through?
Yeah. I think when you're sitting in this role, you have what's called a closed record hearing in front of you, so you only get to consider the record that's presented to you. So, you know, common knowledge is there. You know, you come with a common knowledge. If you have an absolute, let's say, you know, I am going to disclose that the developer is a friend of my husband's, and then I disclose that, and usually when you disclose, you know, there may be a bit of a conflict, I can say, but I can be fair and impartial. Or you can recuse yourself. When you come with these ideas or pre-formed opinions that might get you in a little bit of trouble, because you can only use the facts in the record, and then you have to make findings of fact based on that record. So that's where you have facts in front of you, maybe because you know something else. If that enters into your decision, that may be problematic. And so you have to go with what's in front of you in the record. So I'm trying to think of a good example. You know, the record in front of you says, you know, it's X, Y, Z, and you say, but wait a minute, when I was out there, I saw this other thing going on. You don't get to talk about what you saw out there. You have to look at the record in front of you.
Are we allowed to add to the record?
I don't believe so, because you're sitting as a judge. So, and I say I don't believe so because I would punch your city attorney on that one, but my understanding is you only get the record in front of you when you're sitting as the judge. So you get the record, and you're listening to the appeal of the parties, but adding to the record seems like you'd be adding facts? I guess when you say adding to the record, I would say you could add questions, you know, you could say, I have a question, can you clarify? But adding facts may be problematic. And again, I think your city attorney can walk -- we do hold trainings on quasi-judicial hearings, but I think your city attorney can walk you through what you're allowed to do and what you're not in that setting. And the idea is if you make a finding of fact, you're avoiding what's called arbitrary and capricious decisions. And so the litigation I see is over exactly that, that here's the record in front of the council, and they went completely against the record and the facts and made an arbitrary and capricious decision. They just arbitrarily decided something, but the facts that were presented to them bore out something else. And just because it's alleged doesn't mean it's true, but that's often what comes out of it. So did that help answer the question?
I'm an environmental scientist, and the answer is no.
Okay.
But if I tried to tell you about the actions of fish breeding, I would probably confuse you, too.
Okay.
I get it, but, okay, I'm sorry. Go on, please continue with your presentation.
Okay. And I think the best thing I would suggest is talking to Quinn, your city attorney, especially if you brought a project that you know has some complex environmental issues, and you come with a set of understandings. I don't think you can question the findings of the experts as presented, but I would really defer to Quinn on some of that, because I don't conduct the hearings, and I know Quinn's very good at land use.
Okay, well, thank you. I wasn't just talking about land use, but thank you. Please continue. I'm not trying to hold you up.
Okay. So the next area in land use that you can get somewhat into trouble is inserting yourself in a land use issue. So I'm going to give you three cases by way of examples of what not to do, and the first one is actually one of our cases. It's Westmark versus the city of Burien. And it resulted in a $10 million verdict and a finding that the council interfered with the developer's business expectancy. So some of what happened in Westmark can't happen now. This is before the current land use laws, which have deadlines for decision-making. But this was a highly controversial project in the city of Burien, and it was right when they incorporated. In fact, this project had been started with King County, and Burien actually incorporated back in 1993 on the idea that they really didn't want to be a community of apartments. They broke away from King County and incorporated because they really wanted to have more single-family homes, and they didn't like what was happening through the King County Land Use Department. So you went into this project, it was already with King County, they brought it in-house, they didn't have a lot of staff, and there were long delays in the project. Now, I'm going to tell you, this was a very sensitive environmental area. It was on a cliff. There were significant environmental issues for which the developers wanted, you know, to not have to do a lot of mitigation and a lot of study. And that was what we were looking at this lawsuit it was about, was, you know, a city saying you need to meet, you know, certain regulations, and Westmark saying, well, can't you just give us a mitigated determination? We don't want to go through a whole environmental impact study. And so there was this delay going back and forth. The problem was throughout this delay back and forth, which we said, hey, it's on the developer, not us, was that the City Council was saying things like, we really need to find a way to stop the project. We really don't want apartment buildings here. And they were constantly dealing with staff turnover as a new city, and it was pretty clear that the planners knew the council was against this project. At one point, we did have a resolution, and the resolution was an approval of a mitigated determination of significance, and that we would pay $250,000 as WCIA. That went in front of the council in exec session, and in exec session, there was, you know, an approval, not a vote, but basically we were told to move forward with negotiations. Then when we put the deal together, the City Council would not approve it in open session and basically said, no deal. So we were back in front of the court again, and in the end, the jury that heard this case did not believe that the delay was with the developer. They felt that the delay was a direct result of the input of the council and of a state legislator who lived in the neighborhood and didn't want the apartments. And so the jury found the city liable for approximately $10 million in delay damages and attorney's fees. When we appealed this up to the Court of Appeals, they found a tortuous interference and said, no, it's pretty apparent that the City Council did not want these apartments, that they found ways to interfere throughout the process and to intimidate staff, and when they had the ability to make it right and they had the ability to resolve this, they chose not to, and they chose to continue the delay. So again, this is where, when, you know, a controversial project is going in, you want to make sure that you're not inserting yourself and you're letting your planning department do all of their work independent before they make the recommendations to you. So if you're interfering in the beginning, there's going to be an argument that you're causing any delays in that permitting process. The next one is Mission Springs versus the city of Spokane. And this is what I call the city attorney's case, and you'll see why when I describe it. Mission Springs was a huge development that was going in at the city. It was fairly controversial. It had met all of the requirements under their code, and it was proceeding as an approved development, and various citizens came to the mayor and said, you know, how do we stop this project? We don't want this project to go forward. And so the mayor said, well, I'll tell you what, why don't you come to the next council meeting? He didn't advise the developer that they were going to talk about their development, and he had a packed room full of people. And what he did is he asked the planning director on the record, please let me know the status of the Mission Springs development. And the planning director said, we are about to issue, we're issuing the grading permits, the project is good to go. At that point, the mayor said, I am directing you to not issue the permits. And the city attorney, now what I'm guessing Quinn will do is he will say, I think we need to go into executive session. And in executive session, he's going to explain why you cannot do what you're doing, that it meets all of the development criteria, and the permit must issue. For whatever reason, the city attorney of Spokane decided on the record to say, Mr. Mayor, you do not have the authority to do that. It is illegal for the city not to issue the grading permit, and I urge you to stop this course of action. The mayor said, I don't care, the citizens are here, I am directing the public official not to issue the permit. So the permit didn't issue, the developer sued, and the court found, A, there was no legislative immunity because the mayor acted on their own, and they found that the mayor was liable under state and federal law. So not only was there no immunity, but there was clear liability, because you were told that this is illegal, that this met every requirement of the city, and that the grading permit should issue. So not only no immunity and liability, it was deemed what's called an intentional act. And what that means is the city of Spokane had insurance, was insured through a private insurance carrier, and they said, look, you knowingly broke the law. Therefore, there is absolutely no coverage for any damages in this case. And there was litigation over that decision as well. I know there was a very large dollar settlement. I still don't know who paid it, if the carrier ended up paying it, or if the city did, but I know it was a lot of money in the high six figures, but I don't know who paid it. So I say this because if your city attorney starts asking you to either go into executive session, I urge you to do that so that they can explain what your liability could be and the law. And additionally, listen to your city attorney. If they say, this is not, you know, you cannot do this, this is illegal, you need to listen to them and listen to what they have to say. The next case is actually a win for Kitsap County, but it's illustrative, so that's why I use it. This was a group, a mobile home park development, and it had quite a bit of issues with the Department of Health regarding, I think, sanitary sewer septic systems, and so there was a long delay. And what normally happens is when there's a long delay, you often get a public records request in, so people can say, hey, what's really going on here? Why is this being delayed? We're being told it's because of the Department of Health. We think there's something else. And what happened was in this public record disclosure, there was an email from a commissioner to a constituent that said, don't worry, we will do everything we legally can to stop this project. And so Woodsview said, aha, it isn't the Department of Health that's the delay, it's the commissioners. They are trying to stop this project. So they're thinking they have the Westmark where, aha, people are being told to delay. The good news for Kitsap County is that no one in their planning department knew anything about a commissioner wanting to stop this project. And so they were able to show that, look, we were never contacted by this commissioner, we had no idea that there was any opposition to this project, and in fact, this, all of this delay was for the Department of Health to evaluate it. And so what the decision said is avoiding the taint of bad faith is paramount in land use. And so they found there was no bad faith by anyone that was working on the project because they had no idea what the commissioner said. So what I would caution is because of that email is why Kitsap County was in litigation. You know, had that email not been put out, or had people not heard that a commissioner was against the project, you wouldn't have had a lawsuit. And so just that idea that there could be interference generated a lawsuit that the county had to defend. So with land use, any questions I can answer? Okay, don't see any. So let's get into the world of personnel. What I will say with personnel law is you want to stay as a council in your legislative role, and your role in personnel is to set policies, set budgets, and municipal codes. You don't want to stray into the executive role, which is the mayor and Larry. They are responsible for the management of employees, the hiring and firing of employees, and the discipline of employees. And as, you know, that person, that executive, they can be held personally liable for employment actions. I am, you know, can be held personally liable for the actions that I take, and so you don't want to involve yourself, because this is an area where personnel law is changing constantly, and it's a very complex area, and there's a lot of minefields throughout it. And in fact, we have a program where we offer to our members a consult with an attorney on any employment issue they may have, and they can talk to that attorney and work through that issue so that they don't violate the law. What I have seen is when you have members of the council getting involved in personnel actions, it can lead to a lot of bad feelings, it can add to quite a bit of discussion, and I've had it where cities have basically kind of gotten into war over a personnel action that has gone on, and it's really distracted the city from day-to-day business. So Lauren, I see you have a hand raised.
Yeah, I just have a question on that front with respect to remaining that legislative role. When you have staff or employees that are kind of blocking your bill to legislate and wanting to kind of act as a legislator in the drafting and creation of ordinances, and you let folks know about that, I mean, it's kind of a gray area a little bit to me, because you're trying to legislate and fulfill your obligations and duties of the councillor, but on the other hand, staff's trying to block that. But when you raise the issue that's going on, is that getting into the arena of managing staff?
I think if you have somebody presenting you with, let's say, a policy, it may be because the policy is set legally. We have quite a few, like a harassment policy, that is, you know, already vetted through a lawyer, and so you want to make sure, I mean, there's requirements in certain policies, personnel policies, there are certain requirements that you need to have. So it may be something like that. I don't know for sure that that is, but generally, what I see staff presenting is usually something that they've vetted, maybe through a law firm. Not sure if that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I guess maybe it'd be good just to have the contact information for additional follow-up for legal counsel that's available.
Well, I would actually say follow-up with your city attorney, because they're probably the ones that are starting the draft. I'm not sure, Larry, does Quinn work on your policies?
Yes, he does. He does work on our policies.
Okay. Because it might be worth talking to your city attorney on that one, too, as to what, you know, why they're drafting. you know, why they're drafting it the way they are. It's hard for me to speak, to not knowing specifics, and what, you know, the reason why they're saying, you know, this, this policy needs to go forward this way. It looks like, Kevin, you have a question?
Yes, I do. This one's kind of, it's an issue that's popped up, you know, lately. When you receive information from a city employee supervisor about possible harassment, but he asks for your confidentiality, and now you're going to struggle between informing the executive and living up to what he's requested.
Right.
Any advice on that one?
Absolutely, and you're actually getting into my next slide. The advice is that you cannot have confidentiality. So you're, you as council members are held to the harassment and discrimination policies. And you, if, let's, I'm going to get to your question, but I want to do a little bit of background. Harassment and discrimination, those policies, you adhere to them, and so you should know the law, and you should know your individual policies as the city. If you are aware of behavior, or made aware of a problem, it must be reported to the executive. And that's because harassment law, harassment and discrimination says that once you have been made aware of it, and you are the city, you are in a legislative role, you're also considered to be, you know, supervisors, managers, people that are of a certain level are held to be the city. So once the city has knowledge, they must investigate. And so my advice, and I've had this happen to me personally, where someone has come to me and said, you know, this, my manager is intimidating me, is harassing me, because I'm a woman. And, but I don't want you to do anything about it, I just want to put you on notice. The answer is, I'm sorry, I have to report this, I cannot keep it confidential, you know, the law requires me to do so. And so that's when you need to report it immediately to Larry, the mayor, and then we, you know, we will help them with an investigation if one is needed. So, you know, there's a lot of difference between illegal harassment discrimination and what the words harassment and discrimination. And so that's why I would encourage you to go to the training, because there are, you know, there are forms of discrimination that are legal, there are forms of harassment that are quote legal. It's what's illegal under the law. Usually, it's based on certain factors like gender, national origin, race, religion. So, you know, my boss may be mean to me, and I may say he's harassing me, but that may not be illegal harassment. But I don't expect you to have that conversation with the employee, but that's why the executives need to know, so that they can investigate and determine if there is any illegal harassment discrimination going on under the policies.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Okay. Lauren, I see you have a question?
So, and it's an interesting conversation about what's harassment and what's not, but just in general, it sounds like asking for work products, even maybe if it's a little bit too frequent product, too frequent occurrence is not harassment per se.
Um, maybe not, but I'll tell you, I'll give you an example. Let's say there's myself and my male coworker. And the boss tells the male coworker, you're doing, you know, you're doing a great job, and I know he's behind on assignments, but I keep getting told I have to do my job, I have to do my job, I'm behind, I'm behind, I'm behind. I may be able to make some type of claim that it's based on my gender. I'm not saying I'm going to get there. But sometimes it can be as, as little as there's what's called desperate treatment, where, you know, they're a little easier on the guys, a little more demanding on the female. That may get there, may not, just really depends on the totality of the circumstances and the evidence. You can also have situations that policies, by their very nature, can be discriminatory. And that's where, you know, we also help with some of the policies to make sure they don't have any, what I would say, any language or any action that may result in some type of discrimination complaint. But just like now, when you apply for a job, there's not a lot on there anymore. Like when I applied for jobs, there was all kinds of private information that was asked for. And now, you know, there, it's, it's pretty strict on what you can get on an application and what you can ask during an interview. So, you know, I remember being asked, you know, what are your plans for having a family? Do you think you'll be pregnant in the next couple of years? Well, you can't ask those kind of questions anymore. So it's things like that, that can get you into trouble.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, I don't see any other questions. So I'm going to talk about another area, and this one's kind of confusing, and so I'll go through this with some example, and then, you know, we can talk about it. It's something called negligent misrepresentation. So as I mentioned earlier, you're kind of, you're held as a speaking agent, a representative of the city. And what can happen is if you make a representation to an individual, and they rely on that, and I say here, a specific promise or assurance. So if you make a promise or an assurance, and this doesn't, don't think about campaigns, this does, this is more as a city council person. If you say, you make a promise or assurance, I rely on that, and I'm damaged because of it, I could have a claim for negligent misrepresentation. So let me give you a specific example. One of our members has a downtown that is all cedar shingle. And every downtown building has to be clad in cedar shingle. And a business owner, who actually owned the building, came in and talked to the mayor and said, you know, this is ridiculous, it's too expensive, I've got to replace the shingle, but I can't afford to put new cedar on, is there any way that I can do something different? And the mayor said, well, I really value you as a business, I value making sure that you stay in the community, so I'm going to go ahead and say, you can just go put up stucco, that's fine. And so the business owner tore down his shingles, put up stucco, and next thing he knew, he had a stop work order from the building official saying, you're violating code, and you must take down all this stucco. And he said, but I talked to the mayor, and the mayor told me I could do it. And the mayor did say, yeah, I did tell him that, I did tell him that he could do it, I wanted to keep him in the community. Well, that went directly against code, and therefore, that was a promise that could not be kept. And therefore, there were damages, which were the cost of the shingles, as well as the, I mean, the cost of the stucco, as well as the removal of the stucco. And so we paid that claim, because there was a specific promise that that person relied upon to their detriment. Kevin, it looks like you have a question?
Yeah, it's directly related, and this is something that came up, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody on the room or on the phone. So if we issue a building permit that has diagrams of exactly what they're doing, and we don't know what's under the land, and we issue them after we, they pay the fees for this, the building inspector says, yes, you can do it. Whose fault is it when we find out there's hazardous waste underground?
That, that's actually something totally different than this. Building officials have immunity, and there's also something called the public duty doctrine, which says when a building official is acting ministerially, they're not liable. So if you have, even an inspector goes out, all you're looking for is, does it meet the code? So any condition or problems with construction, they're not there to ensure the quality of the work, or that there's not a problem. They're just making sure it fits code. And so there's a whole line of cases along that line that deal with the immunity for public officials, and this thing called the public duty doctrine that says, when you're in your ministerial role, you don't have liability. So that's a little bit different scenario than making the promise and assurance to someone. So, but if, if, for example, there was a known hazard, so if the building official goes out and there is a known dangerous hazard, they know about it, and they look the other way, that's a problem, but they don't have a duty to investigate further, and they have to know it's a hazardous condition, for that public duty doctrine to not apply.
What if, hey, I know I'm dragging it on, Mayor, I do apologize, but you know why I'm asking the question. What if we had an easement on a property, and we lost the records, and nobody knew about it, and we tried to blame the homeowner?
You have an easement? I mean, an easement is legally recorded, so it's got to be somewhere, right?
Yeah, you'd think it wasn't.
Okay. I mean, I don't think it really falls under the negligent misrepresentation, and, and there's a whole other group of law that talks about, you know, this is just an easement, but with public property, you can't have prescriptive easements, or, God, there's another term for it, sorry, it's, you basically, you know, someone can't take over public property and call it theirs, just because you stopped using it. And I'm sorry, I'm just blanking, it must be the hour. But there's a whole bunch of law, because people were doing that in Seattle with some of the waterfront property, where they said, well, the city didn't even know they owned it, and the city isn't using it, well, it's still public land. And so just because, you know, it's, the city maybe forgot about it, it doesn't become yours. Adverse possession, thank you, that's the term. So you can't adversely possess what is public land. So, you know, easements, I'm not positive on, but generally, if it's public, you can't say you own it now. Does that make sense?
Even when you ask the city for a building permit on top of an easement, that they don't know where the easement is?
Uh, that's such a specific question, I'm going to refer to your city attorney, because I'm not, I wouldn't, I have to know all the facts of it. And so if the city, you know, generally, if a city has property, you can't, you know, the city has to make a decision to vacate that, you know, property or that easement before you can do anything, is usually my understanding. But I'm going to defer that one to the city attorney, because I'm not positive.
Yeah, something tells me we'll be talking about this for two hours if I don't shut up, so I do apologize.
No problem. So what I would say with negligent misrepresentation is, if you don't have the answer, feel free to say, I don't know, but I know a staff person that can answer the question. And that's usually your safest route, is you have specialists on city staff. And so if you get a specific question, you can say, I don't have the answer to your constituent, but I know who, who does. And feel free to say, you know, here's the person I'm going to refer you to, and let me know if, if they don't contact you, or if you don't get a answer from them. What I would say is, you know, you don't want to take matters into your own hands. We actually have had situations where we've paid claims, because, you know, a public official has said, you know, don't worry, we'll take care of it, I'll handle all of it for you, and then it just becomes, you know, something it shouldn't have been, and the person was damaged from it. So I again would say, you know, just refer it to staff, that's what they're there for, and that's what they're experts in. Kevin, I see your hand up, is that from the last question, or did you have another question for me?
Sorry, I had to unmute, I do apologize, I'm not trying to ask that many questions. Lower hand, sorry.
Okay. All right. So the next area where councils can get in trouble is what's called defamation. So I'm going to start this out by saying, you in elections, when you are running for office, you can defame your opponent all you want, there's actual case law on that. So anything you say about your opponent, you can't be sued for, so this does not apply to elections. So in general, when you are legislating, you're... But where you can get into trouble, and this is where I would say, be cautious when you're talking about an individual. You are in a public forum, and so part of defamation is that this has been made open to the public. I mean, if I'm talking to my friend, and I defame somebody, it may not be legally defamation, because it wasn't quote published where the public would see it. In a council meeting, you're definitely in an open forum. So any untruth, any untruth can give rise to liability. And that's where you have to be careful, because unless you know for a fact, and let's just say, you know, I, you may say, I'm pretty sure Ann isn't a real blonde, and I think she's, you know, faking it as a blonde. Well, guess what? I'm a blonde. That untruth could give rise to liability. Now, there are some areas with public officials where there is some leeway, but if it's staff or a private individual, I wouldn't touch it. I wouldn't defame, look at defaming anybody, or making any statements about an individual. And like I said, it's a fine line on a public official, you know, if, if you're going to talk about them, or make disparaging comments. There are situations where I've seen, even after employees leave a position at the city, that there are things said about them, I've seen defamation lawsuits brought against councils who have talked about people who've left, or, and made disparaging comments in public. That's, that's really where this comes from, is an untruth, a knowing untruth that is, you know, is published, is what they call it, published. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's in the paper. Lauren?
I'm curious to know about the flip side of that, for council members possibly being defamed by staff, and the risk of trying to clear the public record, as a council member that maybe has been defamed by staff, wants to clear the public record, but then doesn't want to be at risk of defamation.
I would say, it, how, it, it depends on how the city staff is addressing it. Again, it has to be an untruth, and it has to be published, which means public, and it has to be a knowing untruth. So I would suggest that that not be brought up in an open session, and I suggest you talk to the mayor or Larry about that privately. And I think that's where you don't have that publication. So if you have a concern, I would definitely bring it to your executives, to say, I have a concern about what's being stated, and look for avenues to address it there, rather than in the public. Yeah? Lauren?
And what resources are available to council members who may have been, may have faced defamation through Washington City?
Um, we would not, we defend the city, so if you have a defamation claim, we would be defending the city. So we don't help, I wouldn't help you perfect a defamation claim, because it would be against the city.
No, I'm sorry, I guess, yeah, in that, I guess in that scenario, if someone may cling against an individual council member, would, would there be resources available to a council member?
Oh, sure. If you, if you defame someone, and you're within, within the course and scope of your duties, I would provide you a defense. Now, there was a situation where a council member, on their own time, not during a council meeting, not, you know, part of their duties, decided to email a, an employer of a previous employee, a current employer. So employee quits, goes to another employer, and the council member sent an email to the new employer saying, you can't trust this person, they're a liar, when they were at the city, they did X, Y, and Z. And that was decided that that wasn't within the course and scope of your duties as a council member, and so that was individual, they had to defend that themselves, because it really wasn't part of their job duties to contact a new employer regarding... it really wasn't part of their job duties to contact a new employer regarding an ex-employee. But if you, if you have a situation where, you know, you make a comment and, you know, you were on the dais, then, you know, you, you are insured through WCIA when you are within the course and scope of your duties as a council member.
Thank you, Ann.
How does that, how does that work with conflict of interest? Let's say, a city councilman employs a contractor through the city, but then that contractor turns around and the city councilman now works for him. What type of conflict of interest would that cause?
That one I'm gonna defer to your city attorney on and your conflict of interest policy. And there's, there's some pretty good resources through AWC and MRSC where you could ask, what's the conflict of interest? There's, there's state law that deals with conflict of interest and there's some pretty specific statutes on that, so I wouldn't start to quote that. But often you have that in your own policies, I would think you have. We have a resolution in our organization that regards me and conflict of interest and it kinda outlines what I can and can't do. So, I would defer to, if you think there's a conflict, talk to your city attorney. And again, MRSC is municipal research services and they have quite a bit of information on their website. We work quite closely with them and they could probably help you with the conflict question, as well as your city attorney.
Thank you, thank you.
So, the next area that we can have liability is in public works. And this is an area that I see a lot of exposure from councils and I've seen it in claims throughout the years. So, one thing I'm gonna tell you about is something called joint and several liability. And this exists in the state of Washington. Joint and several liability basically says if a plaintiff is fault-free and there are multiple defendants, if there is at least 1% of fault attributed to a defendant, that plaintiff can collect the entire judgment from that defendant. So normally you would think if you're sitting on a jury and you say, Ann's 70% at fault and the other driver is 30% at fault, you would think that I would pay 70% of the damages and the other driver would pay 30%. When the plaintiff is fault-free, they can collect the entire amount from me or the entire amount from the other person. When juries are making these decisions, they don't know about joint and several liability, they're not allowed to. So what often occurs is that cities get dragged in to, you know, basic lawsuits, because there's not enough insurance to cover the injuries of the party who is damaged. This comes up a lot with crosswalks, with signs, with speed limits, it's called, basically negligent road design. And so what happens is, you know, someone is walking in a crosswalk, they're hit by a car, they have catastrophic injuries and maybe that car only has $25,000 worth of insurance, they're going to look for another, what we call deep pocket, which is normally the city. And they're gonna sue the city and say, the design of the crosswalk was negligent, the lighting was negligent, the speed limit was too high, there weren't enough, there wasn't enough signage. And what these cases become are engineering malpractice cases. And so what we have to do is usually the other side retains an expert who says, here's the engineering protocol that should have been used and the city didn't do it. And what we do is we put on our city traffic engineers and say, here's the engineering that we used. And there's things called the manual of uniform traffic control devices that guide it, there's warrants that guide, specific treatments, stop signs, speed limits, and all of that study comes into play. And that's how we defend those cases. But what can happen is that sometimes you have pressures from citizens to say, we want a crosswalk here. And so you, you know, want them to feel safe and you think, yeah, that's a good idea, let's put a crosswalk in there. Well, believe it or not, more people are killed in crosswalks than they are jaywalking. And that's because they have a false sense of security. And the last thing you wanna do is put in a crosswalk that has not met the warrants for a crosswalk. There's all kinds of conflict that occurs with a crosswalk. You can have, you know, you're coming out of a blind corner and there's a crosswalk or it puts people, mid-block crosswalks can often be problematic, because there's no stop sign or way to alert people that there's a crosswalk there. So what we say is, if you have an inquiry from your citizens that say they want a particular traffic control device or speed limit, that you give it to your traffic engineers to determine what's appropriate. So, you wanna avoid promises, assurances, and inflammatory statements. And sometimes this will come up, you have a horrible accident and it's devastating to a community. If you start coming out immediately and saying there was a problem, then we have to go on the defensive and say, what are your engineering credentials? How much have you studied, you know, the traffic patterns? I've had situations where council members have said, you know, there's too many accidents out there, people are driving too fast and that's why this happened. And the answer was that, no, this happened because the driver had their son in their eyes and the four-year-old just ran out in front of her car. But because of the statements made by, the inflammatory statements made after the fact, we ended up being in litigation and the council members were actually called at trial to testify and they had to say, well, I just said those things, there was no, it was just my opinion and I didn't have any data to back it up. And you really don't wanna be in that position. So, I would say to you, this is an area that you have staff for, that you wanna listen to your staff and you don't wanna get into creating conflict, because sometimes by putting certain signs in and stop signs in that aren't done appropriately, you create a lot of conflict further down, further back. So, again, I don't know if this comes up in your community, it comes up in a lot of communities, and these are very expensive cases. They're generally not brought for, you know, small injuries. These are often fatalities, quadriplegic cases and, and brain injury cases. So, we're talking, you know, millions of dollars that can be at stake and it's very hard for us to defend these when there's not pure engineering behind it. Any questions on this one? I would ask that when you have an executive session, that you do not leak that session. I am, I always say that they exist for a reason. And the reason is so that you can have a candid discussion of your legal defenses. When I'm talking executive session, you have it in real estate deals, you have it in litigation, matters of litigation, and the reason that you're having it in executive session is because it would prejudice you if that information is released to the public. So, for, by way of example, many years ago, I had a lawsuit and I was asked to come to the council in exec session and explain what I thought the weaknesses were and why I was resolving it. And I, they asked specific questions about, you know, the strength of my argument and they asked for specific dollar amounts of what I thought that would be settled for. Unfortunately, when I got to the mediation, my entire conversation was known by everyone in the other room. And that's because a council member disclosed all of that to the other side. So, you know, one, I would say, you know, disclose any conflicts you have. If you have a conflict and the plaintiff is a good friend and you don't feel that you can keep this information to yourself, then just recuse yourself. You also can jeopardize our defense and you can have possible sanctions. And I had a situation where we sent in a lawyer to talk about a very controversial land use issue and talked about all of the defenses and the possible legal ramifications and that all went to a special interest group that was opposed to the development and it severely hampered our ability. So, again, if I find out that, you know, we, anything that we give you in exec session is leaked, and I've had this happen, we just stopped giving updates to the city and we just handled it ourselves and, and didn't release information, because we didn't think it could be kept confidential. Any questions on that?
Ann, this is a Mullen Wolling council member. During a meeting, council meeting, if the council member would like to have an executive session, could he, he or she could ask for that? Or do you have to have it publicized in a week in advance that the city's gonna have an executive session?
I believe you can, at a meeting, go into exec session, but you have to have it only for specific reasons. There's only specific things you can go into executive session for. And that's when, you know, if it's regarding litigation, you have to have an attorney present to go into exec session for that. If you're going to exec session to discuss negotiations on a lease or real estate deal, I don't think you have to have an attorney present. If it's to discuss personnel matters, you have to say why you're going into executive session, the specific reason before you go in, but I don't think that has to be publicized ahead of time. And again, I think, I would defer to your city attorney a little bit on that, but I believe you can go into executive session as long as you say, I'm requesting an executive session under this specific reason, under RCW blah, 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 you quote the right RCW, and then I believe that's when you can go. But again, I would defer to your city attorney on that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I would also caution you to be mindful of your written communications, email, Twitter, Facebook, all of your city email is public record. So what I would say is you wanna use your city email and not your personal email. If a public records request comes in and you're using your personal email, you're gonna need to search your entire personal email account for any that relate to city business and are part of the public records request. If you're using a personal computer, it could subject it to search. Oftentimes what you're doing is you're gonna be doing a declaration that says, I have searched my computer and this is what I found that relates to the city business. So, again, there was some cases that came out where there was city business done on a private computer, a public records request came in and, you know, none of that was disclosed. And so oftentimes, city staff is gonna come to you and say, we have a public records request, I need you to search your computer, and you're gonna sign a declaration that you did the search and this is what you found. So I see two hands on that one, so we'll start with Kevin.
Yeah, the, I just, not a question, I'm just making the comment. We've had this discussion in the last couple of weeks. We don't have, there's a few of us that do not have access to city emails and as far as city computers flat out, the city cannot afford to buy us all the computers, so we have to use our own. Luckily, I spill things on my laptop enough that they can't search it. They get thrown away. But, I'm just making the comment, we do need to have the city emails addresses for the city council members. Lauren, your turn.
Yeah, I'm just curious how that extends to, like, your personal phones, I'm on my personal phone this evening, and whether or not, you know, someone were to make a lawsuit against me for whatever the case may be, whether that personal phone could then be searched, because at the point where I'm risking all my family photos and that sort of personal family communication, I won't use my personal devices for city business and then the city's responsibility is to provide some way to communicate. So I'm just kinda curious where that sits.
Yeah, it's gonna be you searching for the, the, the public document on your phone most of the time, but it may, a judge may say, I don't trust that you found everything. Regarding a cell phone, there's a case involving Pierce County, it's Nissen versus Pierce County, where the city prosecutor, or county prosecutor, sorry, was using his personal account, personal phone and sending out text messages regarding a matter of public concern. And so that was his argument, is it's my personal cell phone, these are personal text messages, and they said, no, because you're talking about the business of the county on that personal phone. So he had a duty to disclose those text messages that dealt with county business. They also requested his cell phone bill and they found that he was, the argument that he made was, my bill is my business and you don't get my, my bill and my phone calls. And the answer was, when you use it for city business, you have to disclose those numbers and the parts of the bill that dealt with city business, or that one was county business. So there is some, but it really relates to the business, the, the public portion only, not your private photos, that wouldn't be disclosable. So, most of the time, you know, it, parts of it could be, but it would only relate to the city business use of your cell phone. So that's where I would, I would be careful with the text messages or, because you need to be able to keep a record of those if they're public, if they're, they're dealing with public information. I mean, something that says, I'm on my way to the council meeting, that's not gonna get you there, but if you're discussing city business on a text, you wanna make sure you can pull that text message.
Sure, yeah, I know, I appreciate that. A lot of the family stuff is private.
Yeah, and even on, I mean, I always, I tell my employees, you know, public, assume everything you do on your public email is public, but there are even, even when you're on a city email, there are some things that they say, no, you don't have to disclose, it's too private in nature. But again, I always, I assume everything's public and I don't do any private business on my, my city or my public email.
Okay, thank you, Ann.
Any other questions on this one? So I would also say, be very mindful of the Open Public Meetings Act. You don't wanna build consensus on email. You don't want to have any type of pre-voting or looking like you're making decisions in a serial meeting on email, you have to be very careful with that. This is also an area where, under the Open Public Meetings Act, you may lose your legislative immunity. So, again, these are just cautions, I know your city attorneys are really good about training you on this stuff. One thing I wanna bring up is a really new issue that just came in for us and it dealt with a mayor's Facebook page. And what, and this is kind of this gray area, because the mayor had a personal Facebook page, but was doing quite a bit of promotion and forum, kinda opened a forum for citizens to contact him on his personal page. So, some cities, you know, the mayor will have a city Facebook page. This, this wasn't the case, where, this was a personal Facebook page. And what occurred was that a member of a group, basically a hate group, started messaging on this private Facebook page and the mayor blocked them. And the mayor blocked the content and this person filed a claim saying, the mayor opened a public forum. And when you open a public forum, you, I have First Amendment rights to speech and therefore you cannot block me. Now, most cities don't have that ability for people to comment back and forth, they have a push out of information, because they don't wanna open up that public forum. Because once you open it, you can't block someone's rights on, you know, speech during a public forum. So most, you don't have to have that back and forth, but that was the big question where the mayor said, this was my personal page, but it was squishy enough that there, our attorney said, there is a potential First Amendment claim there and we paid a very small amount of money to settle it, but we still felt there was exposure. So, so just be aware of that, it's no steadfast law, but you have to be real careful when you open up forums. Any questions on that one?
Yeah. So, we actually had this while we were, I was doing the census. So, we actually had this while we were, I was doing the census, um, was on the other side of town from me. We had a gentleman that, uh, put in his window, "Black Lives Matter" sign, um, I think his kids did it, they did it kind of rainbow colors, and across the street and two doors down, somebody put a sign that says, "Black Lives Matter doesn't, uh, Black Lives Don't Matter to Me." And this was probably a month or two before I became part of city council. Now, when you're talking about free speech, how does a city deal with that? Because it is potentially explosive, it's a, potentially a deadly situation. Um, I, I would've gotten angry if one of my children would've been living in that house. So, I, I just thought I'd ask that question.
Well, what you're looking at, you know, the, the, people have, it, it depends on, and again, there's all kinds of case law on First Amendment, but, um, you know, basically, my context is, you know, when a city violates, I mean, the government has to stop your speech. So, First Amendment triggers when the government interferes in your speech. So, having, you know, the idea that the city would tell someone, "You have to take down this sign because of content," um, is troublesome. And I say that because, you know, you, there, there are areas where you can, and like I said, there's a whole body of law, that you can tell people, um, you know, to, that you can't have hate, certain hate speech, or, um, things that can incite. But, I'll be honest, I mean, we've had cities that didn't want the Nazi Party in their parade, and the answer was, "You opened it up, you have to have the Nazi Party in your parade" because of the First Amendment. So, um, you know, it's, it's government stopping speech by content is what violates the First Amendment. So, that's where, um, you know, people use the First Amendment a lot, but it's really based on the government stopping speech because of content. And there, there are exceptions, but they're narrow. So, does that help?
It does, it's concerning, but it does help.
Yeah, it's, um, again, that's where we say, the, the public forum part of it is what, where you have to be careful. So, let's say you opened up City Hall and said, "Everybody, you know, come in and put your viewpoint on a board." If you, as a city, open that, what's called public forum, you can't control that speech. Now, if you said, um, you know, "We're gonna allow for, you know, specific, um, statements," or, you know, "You haven't opened up a public forum," you're probably okay, but the public forum aspect is where you're gonna get yourself in trouble. Once you open it up, you can't control content. So, that's a, a very small, uh, part of all the big law that is the First Amendment.
Well, I, I kinda wanna follow up on that. Don't we have laws that are about, um, hate, um, hate crimes? And, oh, can't we, can't we say, "Look, this is hate, you know, you, you don't, you don't get to do that in our town?"
Um, some, sometimes, and it's narrow. And that's where I will say, you know, there are exceptions to where you can take action on hate crimes, et cetera, um, you know, violation of criminal statutes. But, um, you know, leg, legislating content, or shutting down, the government stepping in can be problematic. But, again, there's, there's tons of case law on this stuff. Um, and, you know, there are ways that you can have hate crimes prosecuted, and it's, it's just the idea of, um, cities regulating speech that can get you into, into some trouble. But, again, there's a whole area of law, and, uh, you know, we would, if you had a question on something like that, um, we would definitely be able to give some legal consultation on that. And we've had it with various, um, you know, we opened up a, we have our, uh, parade, and, you know, "We don't want these participants because of X, Y, Z," and we'll walk you through that, 'cause there's, there's a lot of law on that topic.
Thank you. I'm so, I, I know I'm annoying tonight, but I'm always annoying, we just don't.
I like questions. You've challenged me tonight, you're making me scratch my head, and I'm deferring to your city attorney a lot, which tells me you have really good questions.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh. Lauren?
I just wanted, um, I appreciate Kevin's questions and comments, and he's not annoying any of us, I don't think, it's a good conversation.
Yeah, I like it. And like I said, I like when I get challenged with some of these questions. And, and again, I live in a very gray area, um, and there's some black and white, but a lot of it is case law-driven and, you know, up for argument. And that's, you know, that's why you have the attorneys that you have, is because, you know, it is all up for, um, debate and argument. So, that is the end of my presentation, are there any other questions I can answer?
You know, I'd like to thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Ann, for a very, very lively, good discussion. I think we'll have learned quite a bit, particularly to be very careful in what we do. Thank you, Ann. Or don't do.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much, uh, for having me, and, uh, again, we really appreciate having Goldendale as a member and, uh, since 1986. So, uh, again, thank you so much for, for being a member of WCIA.
Well, thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
When we're allowed, come see us.
Hey, hey Larry?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry. I, I was just gonna address Larry.
Okay, um, I'm gonna sign off if that's okay, everybody?
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, Larry, can you give me the, um, somebody from the Chamber of Commerce? Nobody's called me back yet.
Yes, I can. I will call the President of the Chamber and ask her to give you a call.
Thank you so much, I, I don't mean to be a pain, but you know I always am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, bye.
Uh, Kevin, this is, uh, Mylean. Uh, you probably know that there's been a change now in the Chamber, uh, that there's a new, uh, President, and so, they're working on getting things organized, and then, very seldom, there's anybody there, so, that's probably why you didn't get any answer back.
Well, well, thank you, Ma, but that, I'm just, I'm just trying to help out the city while I'm down here in Palm Springs, it's, it's a long story, Larry knows the story. Um, it's, yeah, it's okay, but I'm sure Larry will help me out.
Very good.
Any other questions or comments from the council before we close this work session? If not, we'll close the city council for this evening, and, uh, we'll see you later in the week with other activities. Thank you all.